This is Monday, June 13th, 2016. It is 4:30 PM. We're in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. We're rolling downhill tonight. First, we have a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance, rezoning a portion of 2400 Sunnyside Avenue to include a planned unit development overlay, our review estates. And it's going to be the first hearing on that. Mr. Tizel?
Show a map here. This was a request from Zizer. I'll show a map up here, Stephanie. Currently, the property for Zizer's landscaping includes the business on Sunnyside as well as the acreage behind it, over to Cliff Road and up to the north. He's looked at redeveloping this infill site as a residential, primarily single-family homes on the site. So he did go to the Planning Commission on May 17th, and they voted three to zero with one abstention to recommend approval of the rezoning to the council with the condition that the future land use map be updated from commercial to lower density residential. I'll show a layout here as well, but the approval was based on the request of the applicant, the plan to develop an infill residential site, the size of the lots, proposed, the type of housing planned within the development, and the need for various housing types as identified in the Housing Needs Assessment Plan, as well as conformance to the conference plan. In your packet, section three, didn't get updated from the previous ordinance, so there are some errors on that, but we'll get that corrected for the city council meeting. Primary request for the PUD would be for the zero lot line development on the south side of the proposed drive off of Cliff Road. He's proposing a public street access off Cliff Road that would tie into the property of the north to allow future connection on the south side of the development adjacent to his commercial business, Zizer's landscaping. He's proposing zero lot line development with 14 attached units, seven single-family struck, or seven structures, 14 single-family units on their own individual lot with lot size approximately 56 and a half feet wide, 0.17 acres. The size of the lots would be no less than 7,000 square feet. Side yard setback adjacent to the each home would be zero feet with lot width a minimum of 50 feet. All other lots within the development would maintain and follow the same R1, single-family standards. They'd be much larger than our requirements for single-family lots, which is typically 90 feet in width and 9,000 square feet. So the primary impact that he's placing is adjacent to his own current property, which he maintains for his landscaping business. Again, this would have to go through a preliminary plot process, a subdivision process, but this is the first step to move forward with this. Again, through our zoning code, we don't address zero lot line development. There seems to be a lot more requests for that. That's something we're looking at. Other communities in probably in the later summer or fall, when we bring some other code changes forward, we'll probably have some items within our zoning code addressing zero lot line development, so it's a little more clear. But currently, our only process for this is through the planned unit development, and that's what's being brought forward by Mr. Zizer. So with that, if you have any questions, I can try and answer that as well. I guess for the surrounding land use, his commercial business is loan C1 Limited Commercial. The property surrounding or is owned R1, single-family residential with the south side of Sunnyside. Down at the bottom is R2, single-family transitional. The development to the, directly to the west with Gerdis, the Bilby, lots in that area are 60 to 65 feet in width on average. They are smaller lots. They'd probably be, they wouldn't meet today's R1 standards. They'd probably fall under the R2 standards even though they're in an R1. So the area directly to the west, this whole neighborhood west of Cliff Road is, even though it's zoned R1, it fits the size and dimension of an R2 zoning district, which would be comparable to what the zero lot lines, lots that Mr. Zizer's proposing is comparable in size to that.
Counsel? Do you guys have any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, next, we have a public hearing, consideration of, thank you, Mr. Tizel. Public hearing, consideration of City of Burlington Neighborhood Stabilization Program, 08-NSP-003, 11-NSP-003.
This is going to be a public hearing at our council meeting, Syracuse, with Southeast Iowa Region Planning Commission's going to come and give an update. Part of the requirement of the grants is to have a public hearing during the process of the grant, while the grant is open, that we have a public hearing to give an update on the status of it. So she'll be giving that at our council meeting on Monday. But we are looking at the remaining funds, whether we have funds to, excuse me, build one more new house or rehab one other house. So we're getting down to, hopefully, we can get a project going this summer, but trying to identify what that project is with the remaining funds we have. So, but she'll give a recap on where we're at and the status of the grant. There's no action to be taken. It's just an open and shut public hearing.
Counsel, you guys good?
Yep.
Okay. All right, number three, resolution approving City of Burlington, Iowa Goal Setting Report, dated June 2nd, 2016.
Included in your packet is, this is a 14-page document. I don't know. It's long. He doesn't know how to make it very short. Summary of what we went through with the goal-setting process. This is very similar to what we've had in previous years. The last goal-setting session was done less than a year and a half ago. Tend to do it every other year, a little bit quicker this time around, just trying to get it closer to the beginning of the council being seated as a, as a new body. The document is divided up into a few different sections. The first major section is what major city accomplishments over the last couple of years. And as you go through that document and think through, and what we did, we spent a couple of hours reviewing what's gone on over the last couple of years. In some of the areas, and just to, I'm going to note, just as we're going and reviewing this with the public, some of the areas, budget and finance, some of the items that were listed in there, and all of these are within our, within the report, which people can look at within the work, the document, within the work session background material. We earned the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Excellence for Financial Reporting, the last three years, 2013 through 15 audits. And that's really a testimony to the work that our finance department has done and doing an excellent job. Open Gov implementation for financial transparency. We've gotten that platform onto our website over the last couple of years. We've been able to maintain an A-plus S and P rating. That's really a testimony to the changes that have occurred of, since we were looking at, went through a downgrade on negative watch, got rid of that negative watch, and now we've seen our ratings move back up and stable with the, with what last year's rating was. Under economic development, sold the manor property. That is a major accomplishment. And also, within that area, awarded the Big Muddy Trophy. That's based on the highest per capita economic development along the Mississippi River in the past year. Those are a couple of main, major things that have occurred here. City operations, we're able to get a personnel, a non-union personnel wage and compensation study done. That really, as we move into this next budget year, is helping to us to deal with some compression issues and to make sure that we have all of our non-union positions appropriately matched against each other, so that, you know, that we're treating everyone fairly. We've gotten our city code online and it's insurable. From a staffing point, the pride committee, that's not something that you all see necessarily in day-to-day things, but it is something that we are just really trying to work on, better communications of staff across departments, better attitudes across departments. That's with each other and with, with you and with the public, and trying to get that done in all areas. Housing and community development, the housing study was able to be done this last couple of years. And as we move into some changes that were done at the state, some incentives that developers are able to take advantage of, we had to have this done and put in place before they could take advantage of some of those credits. So it's, it's a big thing for our community. Infrastructure, we've got the flood wall funding, major deal as we move into the next decade and some of the work that'll be done over the next six to seven years, really. LED street light upgrade on Roosevelt Avenue is something that stuck out to me, just something that we've been able to, now that we have some funds, are able to actually get a project that wasn't a budgeted one, but within the road use tax, we're able to commit, I think that was about $50,000, that we committed towards street light upgrades in an area where it really needed to get done. Information technology, live streaming for city council meetings and work sessions, and the ability to access those on, off of our website and go back and review them over time. Getting a swimming pool liner, being in a position where a few years ago there was discussion of the pool closing down due to budget issues, to being in a position where we had some local groups that stepped up to the plate to help to fund this project, to get funds in place to make this happen. Library, the summer bookmobile partnership with, with the Burlington Community School District as a way that we can take the library to, to the community and make sure that we meet needs of people who might not necessarily otherwise take advantage of the opportunities that are available at the library. Getting a new police station, it's a big deal. Getting it in place for getting this, it's going to still take some time before that is done, but that, that is a major accomplishment to have the structure, have the funding in place, be in a position to get that done. Being able to, to take the funds that we had for one new position and to leverage that to go after some, a cops grant fund or grant and get a, was that priority, problem-oriented policing, a pop unit in place. And we're now up and running with that and starting to do that over the last month or so.
We have three, three full weeks.
Fire department, we're able to get a new vehicle. I don't know where I had that in here. First new fire engine in 20 years? Close to 20 years. That's a ma, a major thing to be able to be in a financial position, to be able to afford it. The next area that was in there, issues, concerns, trends, and opportunities. Now, these can be either things that are potential problems or things that allow us to see some potential improvements over the next couple, couple of years if we take advantage of them, depending on how they're worded and what, what's going on with, with them. In here, it's broken up by category as well. Budget and finance, lack of property valuation growth. That's been an issue and it's going to continue to be an issue for our community. As we move forward, the potential for backfill to be cut. That's a major issue and concern for how do we make sure that we're in a position to handle the potential loss of 400,000 of annual operating revenue if that were to, to happen. I highlighted parking study, just in terms of how do we make sure that we implement the findings that are in there over the course of the next couple of years and, and deal with some of the concerns that have been, been brought out that we need to, to overcome here in the downtown district. Lack of proactive building maintenance program for city-owned buildings, aging facilities in parks. He's pointing out that even though we've talked about a lot of improvements, we've got a lot of concerns just to make sure that we can handle what we already have in place. So as we talk about doing other additional things, remember that we still have a lot of just existing commitments that we're not able to get to in a way that we really need to. Within economic development, brownfield issues, large vacant buildings, one of them's up for a discussion item tonight, but also Dresser Rand site that we still have to do the cleanup on. Under housing, community development, it would probably is no coincidence that as those items came up, there are a multitude of different things that were highlighted for housing issues, from nuisance properties to new housing development needs to lack of new affordable housing. Infrastructure, we've got ongoing sewer separation issues that are going to be part of our commitments and requirements, and they'll be stressors on our city over the next decade and probably longer than that. Ongoing infrastructure needs not just there, but also with streets, aging sewer lines, the sewer plant itself, and the potential for, a need for a new sledge storage building at some point in the future. Within that information technology, replacing aging telecommunications system, our phone system, as we deal with issues, I think it's pretty, every, every place has different issues, but similar. My phone, you can look at it, you can't see all the, the screen, you can't read everything that's on there. And we're seeing more and more of that, and there, we do replacement of things, but they don't have new parts. They're going, our IT department is going out and trying to find replacement parts from places that have scraps, that have, that can meet, that can fill our needs. So that's something that we've been trying to get replaced, but we have, we, it's, at some point, it's going to be not just a, we need to do it in the next year to two, we need to do it immediately if we don't get it done quickly. Put in here, within parks and rec, decreased usage of, of golf course. You know, as you have a, all, that's not the only concern. I just highlighted that as one of the concerns that was in that area. Within public safety, crime perception. Within, for the fire department, even though we talked about getting a new, new vehicle that we just christened here a couple of weeks ago, we still have unreliability issues with the fleet. We need another engine replaced, and if it was up to the fire department, it would be this year. It's four years out where we have it on the list to, to get done. We just can't afford to get things done quicker than that. And then in the other area, public attitude towards government in general. Now, I know you reviewed those things, the accomplishments, and some of the, and the opportunities or threats that are out there, but you also took time to look at your ongoing commitments. From maintaining self-sufficiency in the city enterprise funds to reaching a 15% fund balance for the general fund, continuing to improve our streets and neighborhoods, continued support for downtown partners and economic development, rehab or demolition of the Apollo High School property is there again. The depot, finishing off that great room renovation is listed as, as a prior, ongoing priority. And there are several others in there as well. The new priorities that are on the list for you to take a look at and, and make, and that you're presenting to the community as your top priorities in this document, we've kept them to three new ones. And that was a lot of intent as you went through this process, was how do you make sure that you put some things that you can actually work on along with those ongoing priorities, but make sure that you don't overwhelm our ability to get stuff done. What you listed on there was Cascade Bridge replacement. You know, as the community hears this, we talked about this as something that you have a priority to work on to see if we can find a way to make this happen in the next two years. Not that you plan on doing this project this next year. And I think that's something that's important with a, with a project like this, that you're not looking to actually have an answer, but how can you, within the next, as we enter this next CIP plan, can we look at it and see what are the, what's the ability to do it? What would be the implications of doing a project like that in terms of either a higher property tax levy or what projects would you have to take off the board in order to make this fit in? You put in here, review of all codes, ordinances, and eliminating those that are unenforced. Establishing a policy for determining who is responsible for enforcement. That really speaks to the need for us to do a comprehensive review of our codes. Departmentally, we need to take a look at it and make sure that we review these. And if we see spots where it does make sense to get rid of something because we're, it doesn't match what we're doing, or it doesn't match what we need to do to make sure that we make changes over time, that we make adjustments. An example of something that's been talked about, Eric is talking about bringing some code revisions. How do we deal with a garage replacement in a, in an existing area that doesn't meet current codes? Is there a way that we can do that that allows for consistency of how we implement that across a district or across the city as a whole, so that we're not doing something for an individual that violates our overall code, but makes sense for the community as a whole? And I know there are a lot of other areas that, that were part of that thought process as the council discussed that. Updating zoning regs to be more conducive to infill development and fit existing development patterns, and that fits in pretty similar. Organizational effectiveness is something you listed too. Continuing, a couple of things just to note, continuing to hold periodic meetings with other government entities was a priority that you, that you highlighted. The need to promote a customer service attitude among all city employees is one that I think was, was drummed on and needs to be something that we focus on staff-wise as we move on through this next couple of years. Continue to be transparent with the public and continue to enhance communications. And providing state-of-the-art sound, visual, and visual aid equipment in the council chambers, that's something that's been a highlight of, of problems that we've had here over the last several months and making sure that we are able to do a presentation without, without it going out. We've, we're, we're working on, that is an issue. We've had a lot of soundboard issues, and I think we've replaced a lot of the stuff that was causing us problems with the sound level going up and down, but we need to make sure that we continue to do a good job in making changes to the system so that people are able to see what's going on, you're able to see what we're, what we're discussing in order to be, have effective government. It's, to some extent, more than what people probably wanted me to go through with this, but it's not all that was involved in this. For the public, the council put about four hours into developing, reviewing what's occurred over the last couple of years and developing what do they want to focus on over the next two. You, as a group, haven't had a chance to review this final document and offer any comments for changes based off of it. This would be an appropriate time if you wanted to make any changes to do it or to get it brought up before, before next week. If there, if you, if it looks good or if you have some changes you want to make, we can get that done. The goal would be to approve this by resolution next week.
I'm good with it. I just, I do want to bring up, I, I like the way he closed it out. Actually, it's the la, it is also recommended, the staff review of the mayor and city council, the status of implementing the goals on a quarterly basis. I just think that was, I look forward to that. You guys good?
Yes.
Okay, good job.
Thank you, Jim.
Ryan, resolution awarding contract for the, sorry, resolution awarding contract for the 2016 Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Project Phase Two.
Okay, this project is the, hopefully, the last project within the Cascade Watershed. There's the potential for a third project that actually addresses some of the MASL, but it would be routed through Cascade, the new storm sewer would be installed there. But, okay, this is the 2016 Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Phase Two. A letting occurred on June 8th, 2016. We had three bidders up from the last sewer separation project. The three bidders were Phi Excavating, Inc. of Sperry, Iowa, Sulzco of Muscatine, Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois. Low bid was by Phi Excavating of $436,403.55. Based on them being the low bidder and being a responsible contractor, we recommend the contract be awarded to Phi Excavating in the amount of $436,403.55. The budget's coming from the sewer fund, and there's $602,000 available there, cash balance, and then my estimate on the project was $507,000. Questions, concerns?
Why do you think there's such a big disparity in bids?
Langman is the high, which is a good 200,000 higher. They are a union contractor out of Illinois. They are busy also. Sulzco, I don't know how busy they are, but I do know that they're not right close here in town. Phi does a lot of work within the city and nearby. They like to keep their crews nearby. There's a certain amount of potential trying to protect their territory also in that. Looking through the bids, there's nothing that appears out of line, disconcerting to that level. They've had a good year dealing with Silgan. They're just wrapping up our MASL project. Occasionally, you go a little low to keep your guys busy, depending on your workload.
They've done a lot of separation already, haven't they?
Correct. I do know that Langman's busy. I think Sulzco is. I don't know how busy Phi is locally, so this is potential for them to just stay closer to home.
Great.
You guys good?
Yes.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan. Resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. You guys have any, any questions or problems about? Resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2015 Division Street Reconstruction and Silgan Turn Lane, RISE, RM-0977643-7D-29. Come on, Jim.
This is the final payment and final acceptance for the project that Shipley completed, the Division Street Reconstruction near West Burlington Avenue, and the construction of a turn lane on West Burlington Avenue serving the Silgan site. Total as-built costs were just under $510,000. The original contract was just under $470,000. We did have a situation once the pavement was removed that had to be addressed. There was an unstable sand layer that had been placed previously for whatever reason that was creating some problems, so that had to be overexcavated and then backfilled. The funding's coming from a RISE grant as associated with Silgan's construction, and then the city matched with that. The funding that was allocated toward this pro, towards this project was $611,836.50. The remainder of that money is towards the reconstruction of the West and West Burlington Avenue's intersection as roundabout.
You guys good? Thank you, sir.
Keep up the good work.
Good news on both fronts.
Okay, next we have resolution approving interlocal agreement between the City of Burlington and DuBois County for the 2016 Bernie Justice Assistance Grant, the JAG Program Award. Chief?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor and Council. This is the annual JAG grant. Because we have a task force, we're part of this program, and if you're part of the program, they include what's called a community block grant with that program, so there's no match to this. It's approximately $21,000 that we're going to receive this year. But since the county is considered a disparate agency, we need to share that with the county. That's a requirement of the grant. It doesn't give a percentage or say how much we have to share. We just have to share. So in this year's agreement, we have approximately $21,000, and I'm recommending that we spend $16,273 for the purchase to upgrade our recording capabilities with, inside the police department. We have three interview rooms now that work on what we call a Pelco system. It's not compatible to our L3 system. Our L3 is our body cameras and our N-dash cameras. And the Pelco system is tied directly to the network server. So here's an example of when it kind of can become problematic. Let's say we have a disciplinary action with an employee. Those are all video and audio recorded, those interviews. Well, we can't lock that down. I mean, technically, if you had any knowledge of the system at all, you could get in there and any employee could see that interview, which is really unacceptable. So that's kind of been a challenge for us. And plus, as we take any document from any interview, we have to put that in the L3 system under other media. And then when it comes time to burn DVDs or CDs, it kind of, it becomes a formatting issue. We've gotten by and we can make it work. We've gotten by and we can make it work, but it's a very old and equated system. The new, what I'm recommending would be made by L three. Each room would have its own separate DVR that we could tie to the network or we don't have to tie. We could just put in a thumb drive or whatever into that DVR if there was something very, very sensitive that we didn't want anybody to have access to. I mean, it's not that we don't trust anybody in the organization, but there are certain things that are absolute need to know. If you don't need to know, you don't need to know. And so this system with those separate DVRs and the separate cameras, super simple, take it down, take it to the new building with us. That was key to me. If we're going to spend and start to upgrade technology, you know, what can we do to move it with us? So we're not leaving this behind. And so that's what I would recommend that we spend our portion of this on. And the county has asked to add eight L three body vision cameras. It's the same system we use. We use the V view camera, but L three actually makes its own camera now. And they're asking to add eight of those to their fleet. They're about five hundred and eighty-seven dollars apiece, so they're asking for approximately forty-seven hundred dollars. The agreement is forty-six ninety-six point sixteen, but, so, that's kind of, and I'll be going to the Board of Supervisors meeting tomorrow and talking to them about it. But again, it's kind of a, it's just a grant application that we do every year and there's no match. It's a good deal for everybody. And we try to spend it on capital projects that we couldn't budget for, so.
We definitely need, it's good seeing you in your uniform, chief.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, we're moving along. The belt's kind of tight.
It's a process.
Yeah, it is.
Any, you guys good?
Great.
Good.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and while you're there, resolution approving extension to the 2014-16 interchange of employee agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa and Burlington Community School District.
Yeah, and this is simply what it is. It's an agreement we have with them for our S O Rs, S R Os in the school. And the duration of the agreement is twenty-four months, but it can be extended by an additional twenty-four months with your approval. And so we're not asking for any changes. We're just asking to extend this. We didn't want to bring a new resolution forward because there's no need in that. It's already been approved, but we are asking for approval to extend it. And then, once the council has decided what they're going to do, is that we'll go to the school board and ask for the same thing. So that's what that is.
You're happy with the program, I assume?
Yeah, I'm real happy and kind of, I'm super tickled with the progress we've made in the middle schools. That's what I'm so excited about. And this year, Officer Stern has just done such a fantastic job. He'll be moving into the high school. We'll be filling that position with, behind him, we've made that selection. It'll be Officer Laura Larger, who has taken a great interest in the children in the community, so. That's where we'll be going with that. And as far as the, the school pays for a hundred percent of the high school's S R O wages and benefits, a hundred percent while they're there during the contracted days. So you would probably know better than I the number of those days. But, and then the middle schools, we settled on forty-five percent of wages and benefits, which comes out to that approximately seventy-two, seventy-three percent overall. And across the state, you're going to see it anywhere from fifty percent to seventy-five percent. Very few would you ever see above seventy-five percent. So, I mean, from a funding, I mean, we're right where we need to be, and to me, the program's priceless anyway. I, even if the school said we can't afford it, I'd, we'd find a way to afford it. It's that important.
Don't say that. Who wants them to pay?
Well, yeah, why wouldn't we want them to pay? But I, I just, they're very supportive of what we do and it's a, it's a really, really good partnership and we enjoy it, so.
Yeah, great.
Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, chief. Good deal. Next, resolution waiving requirements for lot width as allowed by chapter one seven zero dash eight zero, I'm sorry, point eight zero, point one zero five of the zoning code for the property located at twenty-seven fifty Florence Avenue, Burlington Avenue. Mr. Tisland?
This is a property owned by Todd and Tracy Gerhart. They've looked in the past couple of years, I think it is, at different options for the property. Brought forward consideration of one home on the lot at the back end of the property. Also, kind of reviewed options for a full subdivision off this property and I guess what their desire had been all along is to build a single-family home on the property for themselves and possibly one or two others. So what they brought forward at this point is a request to allow two lots on this larger property, which extends back quite a ways to the north, to the northern boundary of the city of Burlington. This line on the east is the city limits, this being the county and this being the city. Currently, there, there's a home here at the corner, a separate home here, and then this large lot is one lot. So what they've asked is to waive the lot width requirements that's required by section one seventy-eight oh, eight oh three, which requires each lot, newly created lot, to have a lot width of at least seventy feet in width for R one zoning along the public right of way. Currently, this portion only has seventy feet in width total, and they're wanting to split it in two. As it gets beyond these two lots that are on Florence, it widens out to three hundred and twenty feet. So at this point, it's well over what our minimum lot width requirement is, but at the right of way, they're only seventy feet, so they don't meet that requirement. As I mentioned in the past, they had looked at a full subdivision in this area, which would have required a public street, sewer utilities, all coming off of Florence Avenue. Ridgeview Drive is a private drive, so they're not able to hook onto that. But, so the request, and I handed out just before the meeting as well, their note, what they're looking to do would be having a shared access drive off of Florence Avenue with a lot split and then having two homes, splitting the lot into two homes. And that is one of the conditions of the resolution, is the maximum of two single-family homes shall be allowed on, to be developed at the property. Any further requests for subdivision or additional lots at this location would require installation of public street and right of way, meeting the city standards, including subdivision. This street or access private drive would have to be a paved surface, which they are aware of and would have to meet some turnaround requirements for the fire department. There are some options for sprinkler, but they are aware that any development of new homes on this property is going to have to meet some requirements for access, turnaround for fire department and other requirements that may be required. We have met with them with the fire marshal in the past as well, so they're aware of that. But they're just wanting to move forward at this time with two lots at the property, and that's all that this resolution would require, or would allow, and they would have to still go through the subdivision process. But based on the uniqueness of having these two lots in front of them, unless this waiver's granted, they can only put one home on this ten-plus acre lot, so. Any questions or?
It's no barrier. It's a good infill.
And we talked about, a number of years ago, didn't we, about this property?
Yeah, they've looked at a number of different options. I think this is what they're, after going through all that and looking at costs and talking to others, that this is what they've kind of settled on, so.
I like your infill. One thing I did notice when I was looking at G I S, that is county property to the right, or the east, right? Boy, what place that is. How many junk cars out there, you suppose? Anyway.
We good?
Yes.
Need it an island. What'd you say? So it's an island, county island. Number six, next we have a resolution approving an amendment of access agreement with Max Convenience Stores LLC for granting access to the subject premises for the purpose of locating a remediation station and conducting environmental investigation and remediation work.
This is an agreement that's been in place since June of two thousand and twelve. This is a request to extend for an additional year. They've been compensating us five hundred a month for this. This is located just off of Central Street, south of Walgreens. Is that correct?
Yeah, near where we have map up, where we vacated that right of way. It's the building there, so.
So, yeah, they're, they have additional testing to do. And I don't know that, whether we might have this come up again in another year. I don't know how long their testing is required to go, but they do need to continue to do the monitoring, at least for the next year.
Okay, but we're never upset when somebody's giving us money. We've got a sit-deep for public hearing, fifteenth, consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with C M M Company L C for encroachment into city right of way at one oh one Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa. Anything you have anything to say on that? All right. Discussion items, Apollo School, Stephanie Stephens. Come on, Dan. Had to kill a couple of trees for this, I see.
Yeah, sorry. Thanks for having me back. The main reason why I wanted to come back is, is really to discuss, you know, the other option before demolition becomes the only option, and that's, that's why I'm here. You know, as we've been watching the support that we've been receiving on, you know, turning the school into a school of the arts, there were some questions that were asked and we really felt like, if the public's asking these questions, I want to have the chance to answer that for them. So one of the questions was, how can you afford to renovate this building? And we had talked about that, you know, when I was at the last, during the proposal. But we would be applying for the grants initiatives, fundraising, seeking donations and volunteer help. The numerous grants available for historic restorations, arts and cultural, community projects, contaminant removal, museum, et cetera. And if a grant doesn't come through for us, we just keep working harder. There are philanthropists that donate money to certain causes and celebrities that'll donate money to certain causes. And this is a great cause, you know, a lot of people donate to the arts and that's what we're after. Another question that we noticed in some of the comments online was if the city couldn't, if the city school system could not make it work, how do you expect to make it work? My answer to that is that, you know, it was my understanding that the school district built a newer high school because they kind of outgrew the old high school. It wasn't that the school building didn't work, it's just that it wasn't large enough for them anymore. And then the middle school in the ninth grade, when they occupied it, they just didn't need that much space. So we could find many ways to utilize all the space. Another question was, how would you keep it open once it's restored? How would you pay staff and how is this project going to be economically viable? You know, we would use the tuition, event fees, sales, grants, donations and fundraising to continue to operate. And there, you know, just want to point out that there are many successful art centers in smaller locations than ours. How will this affect others who rely on the arts for a living? We plan on working directly with all, all the arts-based businesses in town. We, we would like to provide space for art supplies and music supplies to be sold at the, at the school. So, you know, any venue in town that, that would be willing to sell their supplies through the school, they could earn that kind of revenue from that too. It would provide a greater income for them. The school would benefit not only Burlington residents, but residents outside of the city as well. And our intention is not to take business away from already established businesses, but to help promote the arts in all its forms. We want to listen to all arts-based businesses to get ideas on how we can help them in return. So if it's, if it's a matter of whether, you know, the theater on Grove Street where I grew up is not large enough for what they want to do, then we have this beautiful auditorium that's a bit larger. So we just want to, we want to open the doors to everybody and listen to everybody that does deal with the arts. And then, why do you feel there is justification for an art school in this area? The population of DuBois County is approximately forty thousand, five hundred. And then if we take in consideration of neighboring counties and directly across the river, the Apollo School of the Arts could benefit thousands of children, teenagers and adults. There's plenty of talent, and I, I said this last time, I see it in my own classroom. And, and, you know, the school district I work at has a K twelve population of only six hundred and fifty students, and there's, there's just plenty of, of interest in art. And, and I don't know if it's because there's a lot of cuts in, in art funding in the schools, but we just got to foster that in these kids. And then the last question I have is, the size of the building is very large. How can you justify putting an art school into such a large building? This is not just any art school. This is a school for the performing and fine arts and encompasses all forms of art. The auditorium is a vital part of a performing art school when you need the platform for students to showcase the projects that they have created. Having school for an art gallery, or having space for an art gallery is vital to the fine arts to showcase their work. The gymnasiums are vital for the performing arts, you know, especially dance, and for exercise dance classes as well. We're looking at a daycare, preschool, diner, high school museum, academic assistance space, recording studio, recording studio and room for local arts businesses to sell their supplies. And finally, we need the classroom space to provide lessons and space for students to collaborate. There needs to be a lounge space for parents who would like to sit and visit while waiting for their children. You know, it's just, those last sentence here says it's not a question of whether the school is too large. Is this, is this school large enough for what we want to do? The next part of this are just the comments. We didn't leave anything out, you know, if there were things against the building and people want to demolish it, we left everything in there. So we just wanted to, to bring that to your attention. And I was, was going to read a few of the support that, that we've received. And I'll leave out the names, but, you know, yes, yes, love that idea, utilize it. Somebody said, that's the best I've ever, best idea I've ever heard for this building. We need something for the kids, keep them off the streets. It would be nice for somewhere for the kids to go again. I love the idea. Too many historic buildings have just been let go to waste or tore down just to cut trees and, and take land. Eventually, it will be nothing but cement. Somebody had responded, this is the first, I've heard of your idea and it's amazing. This was back when it, it was, you know, leaning towards the housing part of it. I'm sorry that the ideas seem to be nixed. Burlington, Burlington could truly benefit from an endeavor like this. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'm just kind of picking out just, just a few of, of what they said. School of the Arts would be wonderful. I went to a performing art school when I lived in Houston, Texas, and it still is the best school I've ever been to. It's a nice, it is nice because whatever a child excels in or wants to focus on in life, the school will focus mainly on that, aside from their education. I went for dance, ballet tap, jazz and theater, few musicians. It would be music, artists would be art, et cetera. Burlington would be greatly enhanced by this and open more doors for the youth. Like, these are just comments that were on K B R's page and the Hawkeye page. And then, you know, we get into comments that were left on the Apollo School of the Arts Facebook page. We had, I guess this is on a K B R site. Somebody said, I fully support this effort. I belong to class of fifty-five and would have an interest in giving financial support for this building. Somebody had replied to somebody saying the cost of repairs are incomprehensible, and they said, not, not to those of us who have done it before and know where to get grant money for preservation. We've had, you know, more than one person say that they're ready, you know, they were ready to donate. We don't even have a building. We don't even have the okay to, to do anything and they're, they're ready to save this building and put it to that cause. Just, just a lot of comments in this. We had people in that neighborhood that had stressed that they, they want to see something happen with it, obviously, because nothing's happening with it other than it going downhill and they want to see something great happen to it. I fully support, and should, should it be allowed to come to fruition, would continue to support Apollo as a school of the arts. This is a resident in that, in that area. Burlington has really begun to establish itself as a draw for the artist community. I don't see how we can deny something that would dramatically add positive momentum in that direction. Surely, we should understand the value in that synergy. Aren't we, after all, seeking to attract people to our community? And why would we not want to be a magnet from our culture? And then she goes on to say, I'm a homeowner in Saunderson Heights and do not wish to see my neighborhood further devalued by, by Apollo becoming housing, particularly since before I purchased this home sixteen years ago. And then she goes on to talk about, you know, where she was at before this, and she would just really like to see this happen. Personal Facebook pages, we've, we went through and kind of copied everything, people that are willing to stand by it. So we've got a lot of support, a lot of community support. And, you know, if, if it were to be allowed to go ahead, we would start seeking not only the community support, but celebrities and philanthropists and, and businesses and people that are willing to, to make it happen.
Let me, what are you looking at on a timetable? Because with the developers, we would be, we would have them on a timetable. And do you feel like, do you feel like you'd be able to beat a timetable on this?
I, you know, in the proposal, in the beginning, I, I felt like a three to five-year thing to get it up and running was, was about what we needed. I don't think this could come, I don't, I don't know, depending on how many people and how much people would be willing to, to step up and, and donate. I don't know if we could open our doors in a year, but that would be awesome if, if we had forty celebrities that said, you know what? We'd like to put five hundred thousand dollars apiece in.
The phone numbers.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I wasn't even getting at toward the, the final completion. My, my thing is what the timetable on, on what it is set. Yeah, because that's, that's the big, that's the big issue.
Well, we've already started clearing. We had to get through the front door. We were pulling the whole vines and weeds and everything out of the way just to get to the front door.
Did I tell you where I live is, is attached to Apollo School? Did I tell you where I live is, is attached to Apollo School?
Um, no, I.
That is going to be a big issue is, you know, we've got, we've got city people that have to go over there and, and to lock that place up and to board up stuff. And it's, it's really starting to cause.
We would want to start immediately. You know, the more we start raising money, the more we are going to put into it. We would want to make sure that the grounds were taken care of immediately. Something that is going to become a school of the arts shouldn't look like it's run down the whole time we're waiting for those doors open. So we would want to make sure the grounds were taken care of, the windows are starting to get replaced and, and everything is starting to get cleaned up. And that's what, that's what we're after. And then our next step is to, to make it secure. You know, we're, we don't want, we don't want things to happen to it as we're trying to fix it, you know? So we, we want to have a security cameras and things like that in place as well. But we would, you know, start immediately. Fundraising, writing letters, calling on the phone to anybody and everybody that would, that would be willing to get us started right away. We would be applying, applying for the grants immediately. You know, grants, you, they've got deadlines, of course, and, and you've got to wait for them to get, to get the permission. But, you know, while we're waiting, we're still fundraising and still trying to get that money raised to get the next part of that project completed. You know, I, I don't want to look at it as we're looking at a ten million dollar renovation and this is what we've got to raise. I want to look at it as, okay, you know, we might have a, you know, ten thousand dollar window thing. This is our focus. Let's get them, let's get them all replaced or, you know, and then look at the next project in, in line while we're raising money for that project.
You have more than ten thousand dollars worth of windows.
I know. I was just throwing a number out there. We, we, I, I stopped counting the windows when we walked through it today, so.
Before, before you can occupy the building, there's, there's a lot of things that have to be done to the building before you can, before anybody can occupy the building for any purpose whatsoever. So there won't be, there won't be an income for quite some time. The, the, the building's got to be completely, totally gutted and start over from scratch. I admire your enthusiasm. I love your idea. I truly do. I've, we've had a lot of disappointments along these lines in the recent few months and in the past many years.
Right.
And we've had three proposals come forward where people were looking for grant dollars to get the projects off the ground. They've tied up private, private property for a period of time when, when other developers were interested in the property with the promise that this was going to happen. And, and then that, that fell through because they couldn't get the historic tax credits or they couldn't get the housing credits or whatever it might have been. And, and it's been a disappointment. There's been a cost to, to, to the property owner. It's been a cost in some cases to the city. I want to, I want to avoid that. Before, before I can really support it, I need to see some financials on paper of, of what the project's going to cost, what you think your income's going to be, how you're going to sustain that, that building over the years. And, and, and that's what grant, the people that write, that give grants are going to want to see as well.
Right.
You're going to have to have some architectural concept papers put together, drawings put together. And, and that's not, not very often can you get that done for free.
No, no.
Those professional drawings have, have costs associated with them, so. And the longer we wait to take any action, the more it's, the more it's going to cost us when we, if we have to make a decision to demolish that building.
I feel like as far as, you know, I know that we need to strip the whole inside and, and there are contaminants in the building as far as lead paint and asbestos and stuff. However, I, different from the housing, I don't plan on changing the layout of, of that building at all. You know, the rooms are going to stay where they're at. The auditorium is going to stay where it's at, obviously looking much better than what it does. But, you know, there's, we're not knocking down walls. We're restoring walls, obviously, but not knocking them down. I, I feel like, you know, we need to, we need to know that in order to apply for our nonprofit and start seeking that help, we need to be able to tell people, we, we can have this building to make this thing happen. Will you help us? And it's hard for us to say, hey, can you donate, donate to this when we don't have that nonprofit yet? And, you know, to apply for a nonprofit and it doesn't go through, then we have to dissolve a nonprofit and everything. So it just seems that you need to kind of have that, that feeling like you've got the building and you're after this before you start seeking help from, from even celebrities or anything that would be willing to, to hand over their money for a cause like this. So that's kind of what we're, you know, we're kind of up against, you know, a little wall on how do we tell them that this is going to happen if there's not even a building there for them to see that it's going to happen, so.
My question is about the nonprofit. So you're wanting us to sell you a building and the property for a dollar and then you're going to have this nonprofit, which means the city has no property taxes unless you rent some of the building or is that part of the thing that you would do or?
You know, that, that's what, you know, our focus right now is on getting it restored. But there are, beyond what we've talked about, you know, whether, you know, we can put a diner in there, you know, that might be renting out part of that space to do that if somebody else were to bring that in or other, you know, arts-based things or, or something. We kind of, we want to kind of keep it in, in that, you know, the arts community type thing. But, you know, we, we're looking at all, anything and everything that people are willing to share with us on, on ideas and.
And I'd like to piggyback on Councilman Scott's, if you recall, when we were talking about people coming wanting to have the old Apple Trees Museum, we expected them to have a business plan and financials in front of us. And, and so before we could even consider that, I would think that would be a minimum. But my major concern is this. We talked about this earlier this year and Council made a choice of the housing development. And so we've got them sitting over here trying to work out their deal. And now if we say, okay, we're going to give you a chance to decide. And now we've got two, back to two competing things and I don't, I just don't see that that's fair. I don't think that that's right. We made a commitment to the, to the Miller Valentine group and yes, they have a little hiccup. Until we hear that they, they say that, well, no, we can't do this, then, then I don't see how we can go ahead with this.
My concern is, is if Miller Valentine or any other developer that was going to put housing in there doesn't come through, then we lose a historic building in the city, another historic building. And I don't want to see, you know, the one building that my parents had went to school and many, many, many other parents had went to school demolished for just because, you know, a housing thing didn't go through. You know, we, I just feel like that there's enough support for, for this type of a cause that it could bring something really positive.
The demolition, I, thoughts, my demolition thoughts aren't because a housing development doesn't go through. It's because for nearly thirty years now, we've tried to get that building developed. There's been many plans come forward and, and everyone has been unsuccessful to this point. And, and quite frankly, more of them have a lot more behind them financially and planning and, and history than, than what we have from, from what you're able to offer.
Right.
And I, I, I'm not meaning to be insulting or discouraging or anything else. I just, I've got to think of the, of the citizens and I've got to think about what we've been through for the last thirty years. And that's, that's foremost in my mind. I mean, we, it's been very difficult to come to that point, to make that decision. But it's, as it deteriorates, as we chase people out of that building that, that are in there illegally many a times, and as it becomes less and less safe, it's, it's time for us to make a decision. Miller Valentine has a history.
Right.
They've had a lot of success. They, they, they know how to get funding if the funding's available, if it's there. And, and it's, it's, for me, I don't think it's a bad project. It's reuse of an old building and it's, and I've seen a lot of schools throughout the country that have been converted to housing. It's not a, it's not a bad project. Would I like to see yours there more? Sure, I would. But realistically, I, I think the best chance we have for redevelopment at this point is Miller Valentine.
Well, you know, I, I'm not sure, you know, what other kind of projects had tried going in there, but the, the power of nonprofits, I mean, there, you do draw a lot of support. And if these are not nonprofits trying to go in there and make something happen and it's a for-profit, people aren't going to hand over money to make something happen that's just going to, to be a profit for somebody else. You know, nonprofits can, can bring in money from anywhere and everywhere to make things happen and to make things better. And so that's kind of what, what's standing behind us is that we, it's not about, you know, us making money. It's about, you know, giving people dreams, making dreams come true. So that's kind of what we're at.
I love, I love your ideas and I, I love the, I love the heart behind it. And that's why I asked you to come back down. I felt like you deserved the, the opportunity to come back down.
Thank you.
I, I so wish, I, I was hoping maybe that when you came down that you were going to say, well, already have a.
We can double our offer. I told mom, we should tell them we're going to double our offer, but.
No, but I was hoping that maybe you already had some, some philanthropists that had already showed interest and said, we're, you know, that, that sent a letter saying, hey, we've got.
Well, we, we've had offers of donations, but I have no, I have not, you know, I, if I'm going to lose the building to housing, there's no reason for me to say, you know, hey, I know you're a great singer and you're out there on the radio all the time. Can you put money into this? But I don't have a building. You know, I, I don't have a nonprofit yet. I just, you know, we're kind of stuck. We can't get things going without, without this. I, I would like you, before I, before I sit back down, I would like you to look towards the end of, of those papers. There is an artist that, that bought a rundown Chicago bank for a dollar and transformed it into an art center. So I, I don't feel like, I'm the only crazy one out there.
No, I definitely think it's feasible, you know, if you get all the right people involved. I like how you came back and answered a lot more questions, some of which I was going to ask tonight. But there you go, you got them answered. And I, I don't think we should obviously pull our support from our current, you know, what we've currently obligated ourselves towards. But, you know, if things were to fall through with them, I don't, I personally don't see why we shouldn't.
Okay, so before demolition, demolition, then, then we're still looking at saving that building somehow though? Right, if that, if Miller Valentine does not go through with what they're doing or?
We're, we're committed to getting that property developed. And the only way we're going to get it developed is to get it tore down if, if this deal doesn't go through with the Miller Valentine. I, I think, I think you got a great presentation. I just don't think it, it warrants. I have to agree with, with Mayor Protem that when it came to the Apple Trees, we were wanting a little bit more. And I, I just don't think this is enough to, to say, all right, we're going to step back from our, from our plan. That's.
Is there, is there a timeframe if Miller Valentine doesn't come through? If we came through showing that there's financial backing for it then? Is there something, a time that we're looking at?
I was hoping to see it tonight.
This kind of short notice for, you know, we only saw, what was it, last week where they said that we're not doing, you know, we ran into a roadblock and I'm going, whoa, wait a minute. I thought I, there wasn't, you know, I thought that it was already going to be developed. I wasn't sure where we were standing. So I would have loved to have made phone calls and, and made this happen, but I wasn't really quite sure what, what we needed here, so.
I, personally, we made a commitment that it was going to be Miller Valentine. If that didn't come through, it was going to be demolished and that's where I stand, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Do you guys have any other comments or?
You do have a commitment out there with Miller Valentine. They, they have delayed. We don't know whether they will come back, being able to say that they have a, really a good path to get to where they want to get. You will have, at that, at that, no, they're not done, but we did, we just don't know whether they're going to, whether they will be able to see that they have a path forward to, to make it a viable project. That is for, again, for senior housing. It is a, a assist, low in, low-income senior housing. So you do have, have those concerns and those are addressed in the, the information that's in here. Depending on where you end up with Miller Valentine, if they end up not wanting to move forward, you're all, you're, you're, you're still going to be in a position where you're going to have to make a decision on other actions in the future. So even as you're saying what your thoughts are tonight, you still are going to have a decision to make if and when you get to a point where Miller Valentine isn't, isn't going to be able to do something. So it's.
Nothing's been voted.
Nothing is a, is a, is a done issue tonight. And I think that probably one of the biggest hesitancies that you have is, well, there's two things that I would put out there. You, you, you did make a commitment with Miller Valentine that you were looking to do something. You need to, I, I think that you need to be respectful as much as you can with that. The other thing that was mentioned with the, what was done with the Apple Trees Museum, there was, there was a high standard that you put on there for that to be done. And you need to make, you, you really need to make sure that you treat all groups consistently when it comes to that kind of thing. You put yourself into a bad position if you don't.
Exactly.
So if and when you, you come to a decision where you have to go down a different avenue, make sure that you have that as part of your reasoning.
Exactly. Anything else?
Thank you, Stephanie.
I appreciate you coming down. I, I love your heart, honey. I really do. Okay, we have Human Rights Commission invitation, Juneteenth celebration, Steph?
Yes, in the packet I went ahead and put the form that the Human Rights Commission would have received. What we do is we sponsor a table at the Juneteenth event and we buy books and give them out at the event. So I just wanted to have the invitation out there. If anybody wants to stop by, please stop by our table. You can help us hand out the books. We have adults register for the books and then we draw names and give them out. Children, we just give every child that comes up their own book.
I won a book last year.
You won a book? Good. Also, the information about they're looking for donations for cakes and cake, cake, cupcakes for the cakewalk. I just, I didn't know if you'd actually seen the events that they do, so I thought it would be good information for you. And if you do want to stop by, we'll have a sign up on our table. It'll say Burlington Human Rights Commission, so.
Was that in a packet somewhere?
I gave it to Kathleen to put in the packet.
It wasn't in there.
Oh, I apologize.
Can we get copies of that?
Yes, I'll get a copy. You just want me to put it like in the reader? I'll just put them all in your folder. Sorry, I gave it to her last week, I thought. Okay. Any questions or?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, upcoming FEMA training.
Good evening. I would just ask to give a brief update on this training that we have coming up. I think everybody's aware, we're going to Emmitsburg, Maryland for, it's called the Integrated Emergency Management Course. It's a FEMA course. It's kind of a, it's a community-specific training for not just first responders, but really for the whole community. A lot of people like the fire department were used to going on an emergency response, but this class is, it's not about emergency response specifically. It's about what we're going to do after we're there, talk about mitigation and recovery. And I looked through our agenda. It's built specifically for our city or for our county. It's not a city-specific, it's a, it's a county class. So a lot of the stuff is dealing with what emergencies do we face here? And I didn't, I don't know what the first emergency is. I've seen the, the very first day, we're going to have an exercise. And the, the second day is the big event. That's the weather emergency. I think it's going to be some kind of tornado. That's what seemed to be the common theme that we're all like, what's the one emergency that you want to be prepared for? And we're like, a tornado. That's, seems to be the most likely of, of big events to happen here. So that's a two-day event. It's a tabletop or broke off into different areas. And we're going to talk about response, but then we're going to talk about mitigation. And then recovery is a big thing. And the last day, I think the whole exercise is about recovery. So, um, the people that are going from the city, there's thirteen of us. There's some from police, fire, development, parks, public works, some city hall staff. So a cross-section of people, seventy-seven people in total. Not all of them are from Des Moines County, but there's other law enforcement. All the EMS and fire agencies are represented, the hospital, educational institutions, including SCC, private utility companies, the media. And we have somebody from the Hawkeye, somebody from. somebody from KBUR going along. There's state, there's state people from emergency management that are going along with us. There's somebody from the state incident management team that's going along. So, again, a, a couple months ago, maybe, we had a pre-course meeting where there's a specialist that came down that designs our course for our county. He kind of told us what we're going to be doing. And then he went out with the three, trying to remember what that, controllers, and went around the county, took pictures, got an idea of what our critical infrastructure is, went through what policies and procedures we already have in place. So, he built our class off of what he found when he was here. So, that's what we're going to do. We're going to work. We're going to try to use what we have in place, see what, what weaknesses we have. And when we come back, the idea is we're going to have a list of priorities for us to work on. We're going to know what's, what's working and what's not working. So, looking forward to it. It should be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, I would think, for any of us that work for, in this county. I think that she said there was maybe 10 counties in the entire nation that were going to be out there this year. So, it's a great opportunity for all of us. And again, they, it's a week-long commitment. They're covering our costs for lodging, the class, travel. But it is a commitment on the city's part for time, really. A lot of staff time putting in beforehand while we're there and then afterward for the follow-up part.
What dates are?
It's, oh, it's, uh, June 27th to July 1st. And I think we, we've all made, I mean, there's a lot of, I don't want to say important people, but there are a lot of people from the city that are, that are going to be gone that week. But we've all made arrangements to have everything covered. So, it should be a-
It's going to be good.
A very, yeah, great learning experience for all of us.
Are you going?
Yeah.
One of the goals that goes with this is not just learning to deal with that exercise, but the building of relationships between the different entities.
Yeah.
And I think that that's probably the, one of the biggest things that you get in there is learning how to work together and how to make contacts with each other in when the spur of the moment comes up.
Right. Yeah, I think that was one of the big things that gets you to, to come there. That's one of the, the things you're not, people aren't going to meetings or running out of the, the classroom. You're, you're there, you're in Emmitsburg. I mean, you're going to be part of this thing for, for a week. So, one of the things that they write in their information, everybody almost brings it up and you almost don't like to bring it up, but they say, "A lot of people, they go to this course, then right after they have some critical event happen in their community. Then they say, 'Oh, I'm really happy that I had this training. This training really came in handy.'" I was reading it right out of it. We always have things happen. So, I mean, we can blame it on the class when we come back.
Close, just close.
Pretty sure we're going to have a flood. That happens. But, so, any other questions?
What is this?
What's the class?
Yeah.
Integrated Emergency Management.
When is it?
Oh, when?
26.
June 27th to July 1st.
Are you playing this?
I'll be back to Taylor in 20 seconds.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, too. Any questions, any problems, appointments?
Are you okay with this low-rent housing thing or?
I've got the, well, the, the contract is up in July and-
Just Sandy Anderson's?
Oh, oh, with that, okay. I thought you were talking about something else. Yes, yes, fine with that. Fine with that. All right. Anything else? And then future discussion items is 28, Airport 28E Agreement. That'll be June 27th. So, Mr. Tisland?
Mm-hmm.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Um, let's see, over the weekend, or it was last week, I was able to participate as a judge in the Teen Iron Chef Contest at-
Oh, no.
-at the Burlington Public Library. That was a lot of fun. I hope I get to do it again next year, maybe get some more, more teens involved. And then also, we had the community basket at the B Stadium. And that was fun. So, that was a good time. That's all I got.
Councilman? Nothing new to report. Okay. I would have to say, nothing new. Mayor Protem?
Same.
City manager?
Don, did you have anything for the city manager report?
No.
No? Okay. With Steamboat Days, just, that's coming up this, this week. So, just make sure that y'all take, take part. One of the changes that, that is going on, reduce time for the event itself. But we, we revised our contract this last year and it put some different stipulations on. I think the biggest area for that is for property maintenance to make sure that they track their time. We have some limitations built into that for some fixed hours that they're willing to provide. And that's, I think, one of the big concerns for both our staff and for Steamboat Days themselves as that event unfolds. But everything is okay from a police perspective, from emergency services perspective with that?
I was just going to ask that question. How's the police feel about that?
It's going to be great.
So...
Just a village.
Yeah. It's, nothing out of the ordinary from that perspective. And I think every department that I know of is, is aware of where their needs fit in. We do, we still staff an ambulance down at site-
We drive it at night.
And at night. The police has a very heavy presence at the, at the site all week long. We get to get parks personnel involved too with cleanup, along with even some assistance from some of Don's areas. So, pretty much every, and public works is very heavily involved. So, every, every part of the city is, is, gets involved and is impacted by trying to meet this, this service. It's a major issue.
Also, the, the Steamboat Day Parade is Saturday, the 18th, Saturday morning at 10 o'clock. And you're going to be walking with me, throwing out-
Yeah.
-throwing candy at the kids.
I'm excited.
Been working on my pitching arm, so I'm feeling pretty good about that. Anything else before we close out? Okay, this means adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Council.
Thank you, Jim.